Good evening, I have the call to order. The Planning Board meeting of May 31st, 2016. I'd like to welcome John Drooly, a newly-elected member to our board.
Thank you.
Welcome, John. And I also like to recognize the resignation of Ralph Herbst, who has been on this board for a long time.
Seventeen years.
And recruited myself, as along with many other members of the board here, and has been a leader in our town for a long time. And now he's moved on to a different level of leadership, so it was great to have him. All right. First thing on the agenda is minutes of May 10th.
As the chairman, I recommend approval of minutes of May 10th, 2015.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close?
We have an abstention.
An abstention.
Do you want to mention that John's actually filling Ken's seat? Did you want to mention that John's filling Ken's seat?
I didn't hear.
So did you want to mention that Ken is also no longer with us?
Yeah, we should, actually too, that I did, I forgot to mention that Ken, the reason why John is here is Ken, because
Ken Maderas.
Ken Maderas has been served on the board for a long time and for business and personal reasons had to resign, and he was also a long-serving member of the board and very helpful, gave a, you know, helped us look at views from all sides, and we'll miss him as well. You're right, thank you, Doug. The next on the agenda is Woods Hole Oceanographic Institute combined existing three lots into one lot located lots five and six, winding lane, lot seven, Woods Hole Road. Warwick Associates, this is an approval not required. You all had time to look at this plan?
Yes.
That's not it, no. But we, the plan's in front of you. You should have had it on screen, you just don't have it?
I can see they're presenting.
No, we don't need to present it, it's, it's, it's an A&R. And what they're doing here is they're taking three lots and combining them into one. And basically, it does not need subdivision approval, it's just an approval not required. Anybody have any questions on it?
Yeah, I have one comment if I may.
Sure.
A drawing prepared by Warwick and Associates shows a locus map that's very difficult to find its location. I would suggest that in the future, locus map be a little more definitive so we can locate where this is on the, on the site. You have to assume where it is from that locus map.
So you want a different scale?
Well, you can't tell where it is. So, I know where it is, if you spent the time looking at it, but I think it would, I would recommend that the engineer make better effort to
So, basically, there's another road that should have been showed as a cross street that would have made it very clear that it's missing, that's what you're saying. They really skipped the intersection, it's on the intersection of Woods Hole Road and Knobsko Circle, and it doesn't show Knobsko Circle in the locus, so that will tell you exactly where it is.
That's correct.
Okay, I understand that. I'm familiar with the site, so I kind of skipped over that.
I'll speak with the designer on behalf of
The next time we can, we could do that.
Give us a, give us a decent locus map.
Two cross streets are important, that makes it really clear.
Okay.
It's also, there's a Knobsko, Knobsko Road, it, yeah, it's a little clearer on the smaller one.
Right.
So I'll move this approval not required application by Woods Hole Oceanographic Institution without regard to buildability or what else goes in there.
Zoning.
Zoning, thank you.
So basically endorsing the approval not required.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close? Stay? Okay. Screwed, next. Okay, have you all had time to look at this one? At first blush, it seems confusing, but I think if you've had time to look at it, it isn't so bad. So this is applicant EverSource Energy and Deborah Robbins, reconfigure lot lines between properties located on Courier Road. Lot numbers, well, I don't read the details, on the plans that Holmes and McGrath filed May 20th.
It looks like just a swap of space.
Yeah, it's a combination of four lots into two. Into two. With the requisite frontage on Courier Road. So they all have, the Courier, the frontage on a qualified way is there, and all they're doing is moving the lines.
Yeah.
Anybody, any questions?
Okay, so I move that we endorse the EverSource Energy and Deborah Robbins, excuse me, applica, approval not required application without regard to zoning or buildability.
That was easy for you to say, Pat, you're okay.
A little croaky with allergies.
Second.
I like the locus map.
Agreed, very clear. We need a second, you want a second, Paul?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay. Any further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close? Next. So endorsed. The next one is applicant 300 committee, divide existing lot into two lots located at 1, at 318 Cipwisset Road. We should get the plan in front of us here.
I can see it. Thank you.
So, so they're dividing one lot into two lots.
Keeping the house separate from the wetland and
Yep. So it's one great big lot, they're dividing it into two. Most of it's, lot number two is almost all wet. All, doesn't change buildability or zoning?
And you note on lot two, there's a note referencing that it's not a buildable lot.
Oh, and it's identifying lot two is not buildable. They'd have a hard time getting through the setback on that one.
So I move that we endorse the 300 committee application under approval not required plan without regard to buildability or zoning.
I'll second.
Any further comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close? Next. Moving on along. The next one is Planning Board Discussion and Decision for Retail Site Processing, Inc., Eli Jamal's site plan to raise, and it's been pointed out that it might be a spelling mistake there on raise, and reconstruct existing building to bank and drive-through commercially feasible facility located at 815 Main Street, Falmouth Engineering. And at this point, I have to declare that I have a relationship with the applicant, and I need to recuse myself from this meeting, so Pat, would you take over?
Okay, well, okay. And as you will remember, when we heard it two weeks ago, there were a number of engineering questions and other questions that have since been resolved, and I would ask the applicant's representative to go into more detail on this for us.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Michael Bosselli from Falmouth Engineering, and I represent the applicant. Eli Jamal is here this evening.
Hi.
Subsequent to the initial site plan review meeting, we received comments from the engineering department staff, and we, we received feedback from the planning staff and this board, and we submitted revised plans on May 24th. In addition, we submitted a cover letter that I'm, I'm just going to use sort of as an outline to outline to you what we, what we changed. This, this plan that you see up here is, is the landscape plan, it's an updated plan from the initial sketch drawings that were provided. It was more formalized, and specifications are on that plan. Just trying to Am I having a technical difficulty with this? It's not
Technician, technician.
Okay, oh, you don't have the other slides, okay. That's all, that's all. Okay. So, number one on this letter was that we updated the landscape plan, and here it is. The architect submitted new elevations with additional information as to materials, color, and things like that for the actual building. So you received copies of those plans as well. I have a copy here. Roof materials, trim styles. The town engineer raised some concerns about soil conditions at the property, so we performed some deep test hole observations. We excavated in two different places to a depth of 12 feet, we actually dug to the water table, and the results of those soil evaluations were added to the plan, and certain notations were added to the plan regarding removal of unsuitable materials in the areas of the drainage systems. We did encounter some old crushed stone and gravel material that was from previously existing onsite septic systems. The property is now on town soon, and it has been for a very long time, so they were all old abandoned septic fields. So there's been notations added to the plans about removal of those materials. In and around where we're proposing the drainage, if you remember, we're having a grass swale at the back of the property, and we have one drain at the exit aisle near Main Street. We added a detail to the drive-through canopy area where we specified the width of the central island under the canopy, which is where the vacuum tool, vacuum tube mechanism would be, so that as you drive into that lane, if you're making, doing a transaction, you can do it from that vehicle, and the mechanical equipment for that is under the canopy. That's shown on the detail sheet, or sheet three, I'm sorry, sheet one of the set. The zoning bylaw requires that we have capacity for three stacking vehicles per drive-through lane, so in this case, we'd need a total of six. So we've added those and designated them on the site plan to demonstrate that we have adequate stacking. The table of parking requirements is shown on the plan, this is a bank, and the requirements for a bank are outlined and shown on the updated site plan. It's one space per 300 square feet, so we're required to have eight spaces, and we actually are proposing to have 14. The town engineer raised some issues about edging along Cycle Avenue and other areas of the site where we're proposing new pavement, and where that pavement is adjacent to landscaping. So we've added the specifications as far as the edging treatment, which will be Cape Cod firm, along all landscape edges in and around the edges of the site. The town engineer had some other technical questions and clarifications on the driveway entrances, which we've itemized, including notation to make sure that the sidewalk that's on Main Street is maintained in that ADA compliance, along the entire frontage of the new facility will be maintained. I have been talking with Scott, there are a couple of technical matters that he wants me to go through with him at the time that we apply for the curb cut permit onto Main Street. So, that's been narrowed to a very small number of items, and I'm prepared to give him more detail on that. And I think that for the purposes of site plan review, you could approve it, condition upon that if, if possible, I believe it was in the draft decision. We have to, we have to change one of the drains on Main Street because it's, it's what they call a gutter inlet, which is different than what will be required. A gutter inlet is, is a type of drainage structure that occurs next to granite curbing on a, on a street. You may have noticed the catch basin would be next to the granite curbing, and there's a hole in the, in the curbing where the runoff would go into. Since we're removing sections of granite curbing, the gutter inlet frame and grade must be substituted with a new frame and grade, and there's notations in the plan for Another comment from Mr. Schluter regarding the type of vehicles that would access the site, they'd be limited to SU-30 type vehicle, which basically means a straight truck, not a tractor trailer. So there's adequate access for those vehicles to enter into the site, and the turning movements that they require can be performed. There was some discussion at the original hearing about the canopy and whether or not complete access can be made through the site. The canopy, of course, would only allow for cars and small trucks, not trucks like fire equipment and things, but I had described that the staging areas adjacent to the building are adequate, and we've had no negative feedback from the fire department on this. There are two existing trees out in the front of the property that are really not in a very good shape, they're kind of scraggly, so we're proposing that they be removed. One's in conflict with the driveway entrance, and we think that the overall new landscape plan more than compensates for the removal of those two small trees. There was a comment about a drain being too close to the property line, in Mr. Schluter's opinion, we shifted that to a place so that it is more than 10 feet from a property line. So I think that sums up all of the changes, a lot of them are really technical and related to the engineering staff report. Some were comments from planning staff regarding the staging area, stacking area for the cars, and more dimensions on the canopy. And other than a couple of relatively technical and minor questions raised by Mr. Schluter, I think we've satisfied all of the issues and questions that were raised at the previous heating, hearing, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Brian, do you have anything in addition to what Mike has brought up?
Mike's addressed staff comments and revised plans, and they're in front of you tonight.
Okay. Members of the board, questions?
No, you seem to answer everything that we brought up, and I'm satisfied that it's going to be talked with the engineer, and the DEW.
So the only last question I had that was still remaining was the gutter drywells? Did you do those? We, it was a recommendation but not a requirement, and we think a better solution is to just let the downspouts exit at the corners of the buildings onto the pavement and then run to the drains that are on the pavement. There'll probably be four total, so the very front of the building, they'll be connected and be able to be connected and then go runoff either to this paved surface and into this drain, or this paved surface along with all of the runoff on the, on the pavement itself, and the same is true back here. So, we feel confident that the drains, one being here and one being here, have been sized to accommodate that roof runoff, so that no added drywells are necessary.
All right.
Paul?
The engineer's comments, technical comments, all been addressed as far as I'm concerned, and the comments made by the planning board have been addressed as well, including a comment about the emergency vehicle access, so I think we've addressed all the issues that have been raised. Thank you.
Who would like to read the draft decision?
Make the motion. 815 Main Street, map 3920006000. Motion, have the Planning Board vote to approve the application of Retail Site Processing, Inc., commonly known as Eli Jamal, under Article 39, Site Plan Review of the zoning bylaw for a plan entitled Site Plan for 807 and 815 Main Street, prepared for Retail Site Processing, Inc., care of Eli Jamal in Falmouth, Mass., unquote, together with, quote, conceptual landscape plan for 807, 815 Main Street, prepared for Retail Site Processing, Inc., care of Eli Jamal, Falmouth, Mass., unquote, six sheets total, prepared by Falmouth Engineering dated April 12th, 2016, May 17th, 2016, revised May 18th, 2016, scale 1 to 20 feet, with the following findings and conditions, findings. The applicant proposes to raise an existing building and construct a new bank with drive-through with the associated parking drainage and landscaping. The applicant has addressed the issues raised in referrals from the Falmouth Engineering Division dated 5/6/16, 5/25/16 respectively, in the form of revised plans approved here. These issues included the addition of soil evaluations to plans, additional dimensions and details for the drive-through canopy area, and a table of parking requirements. The applicant has also added additional landscape and architectural detail per the recommendations of the planning board. The board acknowledges and appreciates the efforts by the applicant and the development team. Conditions, number one, the plan shall be constructed as approved. Any changes shall be reviewed by the planning board to determine if a modification of this decision is necessary. Pursuant to 240183B of the zoning bylaw, no permit for full or partial occupancy shall be issued until the planning board is satisfied that the conditions of this approval and predecessor approvals have been met. Number two, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant, applicant shall provide Falmouth DPW driveway apron detail for the two new curb openings onto Route 28 Main Street. The applicant does not have to come back to the planning board if revisions are required to obtain a permit from Falmouth DPW. Number three, the building shall be constructed as to plan entitled 807 Main Street, Falmouth, Mass., two sheets, prepared by BF Architects dated May 17th, 2016, scale 3/16 of an inch, it was one foot.
Is there a second?
I will second.
Okay.
Can I make a comment?
Yeah.
Under the findings, it says the applicant proposes to raise, oh, it hasn't been changed, okay, thank you. Now, my copy, it wasn't.
We put those in there to make sure you guys are reading.
The draft that looked at earlier had raised the
Are there any other questions or comments on the motion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close?
Abstain. Abstain.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. How you need to build it.
Next on the agenda is a Planning Board discussion, landscape modifications to 238 Worcester Court, along with the covenant release from Mammoth Acquisition Company LLC, and we'll, we'll start with that, landscape modifications, so we're going to take a quick look, we've, this is a previously approved plan. And, let's see, we're looking at, so this is where, everyone familiar with this one?
Yes.
And Brian, how can we tell the difference here? What, is there something that's called out? So, you want to read the letter? There's a letter in
Thank you.
Okay. Dear board members, instruction of the bank project at 238 Worcester Court, Falmouth, CBF site is planned to wrap up over the course of this month, and as we prepare to install finished landscaping, we want to make you aware of court, ultimately minor deviations from the original view of landscape plan dated 5/7/14. Majority of the landscape plan remains as previously approved, and with the exact same plant count. Current proposed landscape Current proposed landscape, proposed landscape minor modifications, iris follows. Number one, HVAC in a previously located at front northeast corner of the building has been relocated to back southwest corner to be less visible and is still screened with fencing and plants as previously approved. Number two, the planting bed to the west of the building facing CBS is wider due to a minor reduction to the building footprint. Three, the generator at the southeast corner of the building needed to be rotated shifted further away from the building due to building code required exhaust clearances. Number four, a single tree previously approved to the south of the generator enclosure has been substituted with a smaller variety that is more appropriately sized for the reduced space. Thank you sincerely, Danny O'Sullivan. I seem to recall the, we kind of commented about the location of the generator on the original plans, and we wondered why it was so visible. So I think it's, you know, got a location for it.
These all seem to be very minor?
Yeah.
In my view. Anybody else?
So I move that we approve the landscape modifications to two thirty-eight Worcester Court as presented to us.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? None? Thank you. Next on the agenda is covenant release. Same property. There's also a letter in the correspondence. I'll give it to you. Yeah, the correspondence file. I'm looking in the right file. If that's mine, it's an extra. Here's from Laura Martin. I'll look in the right file.
Okay. This is hand-delivered and emailed regarding the Cape Cod Conservative Bank CBS Project David Straits, Worcester Court, special permit granted to Mammoth Acquisition Company, LLC, the applicant. Dear Mr. Fox, this letter is to request on behalf of the applicant a release of the covenant dated May twenty-second, two thousand fifteen, with respect to the construction of the Cape Cod Corporate Bank Site Lot Two, Land Book six fifty-five, page twenty-three of the above referenced project. I would appreciate if you would schedule this for your meeting on May twenty-first, on May thirty-first, two thousand sixteen. To record a covenant and a draft lease is enclosed for your reference, also enclosed as a check here of covenant lease request fee of hundred dollars. Thank you for your assistance. Sincerely, our morning. Okay, so, release from covenant. Whereas there has been presented to the Falmouth Planning Board satisfactory evidence of the board's requirements as sent forth in the covenant executed on behalf of Falmouth Worcester Limited Partnership under dated, on the date of May twenty-second, two thousand fifteen, recorded in the responsible county registry of deeds in book two eight nine two three, page three fourteen, have been compiled with, now therefore on, there's no date, so this is a-
Draft one.
A draft one. The planning board voted to release said covenant held as a performance guarantee pursuant to section two forty, two seventeen B of the Falmouth zoning bylaw to fully release said covenant against the Falmouth property, Lot Two, as shown on a plan recorded in the responsible county registry of deeds in plan book six fifty-five, page twenty-three. And then the rest is Commonwealth next. Juices covenant is. Whereas the undersigned, undersigned Falmouth Worcester Limited Partnership, the owner owns Lot Two, shown on a plan recorded in the responsible county registry of deeds in the plan book page, in the plan book six fifty-five, page twenty-three, Lot Two, and Lot One, shown on said plan. Whereas the planning board for the town of Falmouth granted a special permit pursuant to section two forty fifty-one A eleven of the Falmouth zoning bylaw to permit the raising of the existing buildings on Lot One and Two, and the construction of a new building on Lot One for retail sales and pharmacy use, and the building on Lot Two for bank use. The special permit, which special permit is recorded in the responsible county registry of deeds in book two eight four nine five, page three ten, the special permit. Whereas section two forty, two seventeen B of the Falmouth zoning bylaw provides that as a condition of the granting of special permits for any uses requiring twenty or more parking spaces, the Falmouth Planning Board shall require that construction and site operation permitted and specified by a special permit be secured by a covenant providing that such construction and site alteration will be completed before the building approved by the special permit may be eligible for an occupancy permit. Whereas the use of the new building approved pursuant to the special permit on Lot One for retail sales and pharmacy use will require twenty or more parking spaces. Whereas pursuant to section two forty, two seventeen B of the Falmouth zoning bylaw and special permit, the owner submitted to the Falmouth Planning Board a covenant to provide that construction of the building on Lot One and the site alteration improvements on Lot One and Lot Two to serve the building to be constructed on Lot One would be completed before the building on Lot One is eligible for an occupancy permit, which covenant is dated November fourth, two thousand fourteen, and recorded in the responsible county registry of deeds in book two eight four nine five, page three twenty-one. Whereas the owner has completed construction of the building and site alterations on Lot One, including access to Lot One on David Straits and Mister Court northern entrance, and has completed all paving and parking spaces on Lot One to the satisfaction of the planning board. Whereas the owner must relocate the pharmacy operations from a temporary building on Lot Two to the building on Lot One prior to demolition of the old and construction of the new building authorized by a special permit on Lot Two. Whereas the owner cannot relocate the pharmacy operations to the building on Lot One without an occupancy permit. Whereas the Falmouth Planning Board voted on May twenty-sixth, two thousand fifteen, to issue a partial release of the covenant as against Lot One, and as a condition of such release requires this covenant be recorded against Lot Two. Now therefore, in consideration of less than one hundred dollars paid and all other good valuable consideration, the receipt and sufficiency of which is here, and is acknowledged, the undersigned hereby competes and agrees with the town of Falmouth that the construction of all parking and site improvements shown on the plan approved pursuant to the special permit entitled Site Plan Prepared for Mammoth Acquisition Company, LLC, prepared by Holmes and McRae, Inc., dated August twenty-seventh, two thousand twelve, revised December eleventh, two thousand thirteen, scale one inch equals forty inches, sheets one through seven, shall be completed prior to issuance of a use and occupancy permit for any building on Lot Two. Scale, should that be one inch forty?
Forty feet.
It seems like forty feet.
Yes.
It's written as ever there, at least forty inches.
You're paying attention. Very good.
Yes. This covenant shall be recorded at the responsible county registry of deeds. A copy of this covenant, so recorded, shall be filed with the Falmouth Planning Board together with the registry of deeds and tested copy of this covenant, so recorded. The title, CD, is recorded in the responsible county registry of deeds in book two eight two nine eight, page two forty-seven, and book two eight two nine eight, page two fifty-one, executed as a sealed instrument on May twenty-second, two thousand fifteen, Falmouth Worcester Limited Partnership by its general partner, Falmouth, Inc., signed by Jeffrey Kaufman, President and Treasurer, Commonwealth of Massachusetts and possible. On this twenty-second day of May two thousand fifteen, before May the undersigned, Noor Republic personally appeared, Jeffrey Kaufman proved to me through satisfactory evidence of identification, which was personally known to be the person whose name is signed on the receiving attached document that acknowledged to me that he signed it voluntary for its stated purposes, signed Deborah Stella, Noor Republic. Okay. That's it.
So they're looking for the board to vote to release that covenant because the work on Lot Two has been completed. And you have voted to approve the minor modifications to the landscape plan. So they're looking for a release from the board, a vote of the board. How much money do we hold? You're not holding any money. You have a covenant. A covenant, okay.
So is that a motion? Looking for a second.
No, we don't.
With somebody, Brian, this is a big motion.
I move that we release the covenant of Mammoth Acquisition Company, LLC, on Lot Two, on the property that we know as CBS.
Cape Cod.
I know, but we generally know it and Cape Cod.
AKA. Host will notice. Okay.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? None? It's released? Thank you very much. Thanks for reading that. Okay. Moving right along, very quickly here. Okay, the next thing is a letter from myself to Doug Jones, Chairman of the Falmouth Board of Selectmen, regarding planning board vacancy. Dear Mr. Jones, at its May thirty-first meeting, the planning board voted to alert the Board of Selectmen, we're about to do this, of the resignation of Ralph Herbst from the planning board. His letter of resignation, resignation is enclosed. This is an opening on the board which needs to be filled at its earliest convenience. Please place this on your next available agenda. Here's, sincerely Jim Fox. And it is very important because we have quorum issues and coming up for some very important hearings. So we need, we've got to get the selectmen to move this as fast as possible. So that's basically-
I move that we send that letter to the selectmen.
All in favor?
Aye.
Moving forward, okay. Next is reorganization.
I would like to make a motion that we keep the current administration intact.
I will second that motion.
And that would be James-
Wait, wait, wait. One more time. You need to identify a chairman, identify a vice chairman.
Which would be James Fox as chair, Pat Perfus as co-chair.
Vice chair.
Vice chair. And Paul Dreyer as secretary.
I accept. Paul, you good?
I accept.
Well, we want to make sure, we don't want to vote on this if you don't want to do it. That's why I asked. Okay, we have a motion.
I'd be honored to accept.
As am I.
There you go.
We need a second.
I'll second that.
Okay, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post, thank you very much. And I can say, thank you. It's been a privilege and I really enjoy working with all of you, and I'm looking forward to John and hopefully a new member this year in keeping up our progress that we've done.
We better have a new member this year.
But we have to. Okay, we've covered some of the general correspondence because they're related to our issues. The next thing is future agenda items.
Well, related to one that we have coming up, it's in June, we're going to have the meeting with the Conservation Commission to discuss coastal resiliency. So just a reminder that we need to brush up on whatever reading we want to do for that.
Has a date been affirmed for that, Brian?
Yes, I'll get to that under next meetings.
Yep.
And although it's not on the agenda, it will, I want to make sure it is on all, on future ones as soon as possible. We have been working hard on the accessory bylaw and- Is it appropriate for me to discuss about the outreach we've talked about? I'll wait till the next time it's on the agenda. You want accessory apartment bylaw? On the next agenda because we have some things that we'd like to discuss at that time, and I'll bring it up when it's appropriate. There you go. I don't want to get off agenda.
May I bring something up? Just a quick question to Brian. Since it is rather vital that we have a new member appointed as soon as possible, but we were looking for a joint meeting, which it takes in July, is there any possibility that we can have a real quick joint meeting somehow with the Board of Selectmen to move that ahead?
Right. It would, like before, it would be an agenda item probably at their meeting.
Okay.
I think there are, Dr. Attorney Duffy, there are some timeframes that have to happen. But I think once you receive your letter, there, things have to, have to transpire within thirty days, I think it is. So yeah, we'll just get a quick little item on some, on an agenda, get two quorums together and advertise and off we go. So we will show up at one of their meetings when it, when- That's what we've done in the past. Right. When the agenda kind of comes up, we convene as our board and their board together for the one thing, then we finish, we're out, and they go on to their business. And we get out of Dodge. So just one, one shot, not a joint, we're only joined for that one issue. Correct. It's just an item on their agenda, planning board with you. I think the last time we did this, it's been a while, but that's what we did last time.
I think we had a joint meeting at the beginning of the meeting and then adjourned the joint meeting and they went on.
Whatever, yeah. But we're only there for that one issue. Out. Okay, so accessory apartment on your next. Yeah, we have, I will bring some things up I want to discuss at that time. I shouldn't say I, we would like to discuss at that time. Well, there's nothing else on the agenda here unless I miss another page I don't have? Just your next meeting.
Next meeting.
Next meeting. I just want to make sure the board knows you will be meeting on June seventh. Right now, we're tentatively scheduled to meet June fifteenth with the Conservation Commission. And Jim and I did meet with Russell Robbins and with Jen McKay to put together a draft agenda. Right now, we're looking at the coastal resiliency element that was voted at town meeting, its goals, policies, and action items. And June twenty-first, you will be meeting. If you get an opportunity to come into the office, do so because there's, we have three site plans next week. And on the twenty-first, you'll see the Cape Cod as Ballinay. That's the large twenty-eight lot subdivision. They're returning as a preliminary plan. Once you get, we're getting all the engineering referrals. Something we've seen before. You see, you saw it before, you've rendered a decision, they've come back, they filed, and they're scheduled for the twenty-first. And the plans are available in our office? Everything's available. Stairs, we're still waiting for referrals to come in. But you will have a busy week next week with the three site plans. That's all I got. Do we need site visits on any of these? To be deterred. So we can wait, okay. Don't wait till we hear. I just was trying to- One's on Catherine, the dates like Kipper Street, I think everyone knows where that is. Well, let me put it this way. Everyone go to the office and review the plans, and if you feel you need a site visit, be prepared to bring it up at the meeting. Okay? Yes, John?
Just a question. The, the meeting with the Conservation Commission, will that be an evening meeting?
Yes. Six thirty here in this, in this building.
Okay, thanks.
Sometimes they meet on a night. Other times we meet on a night.
It's in a way, you gave him. Yeah. I, Brian and I met with them to talk about it, and one of the things that, that I found out, there was, what I thought was important, is, you know, we had voted coastal resiliency and it went to town meeting, and we all think everyone knows, well, it's approved by town meetings going forward. They weren't focusing on it at all. So I think it's a good, you know, we, we need to talk and make sure we're both working on the same plan.
Okay.
And that's what it's really about, is just really try to work together. That's why we need to meet, we probably need to meet with them at least once or twice a year. We're not, and it's been, you know. So anyways, that's what, that's the idea. Coastal resiliency and other issues, but that was the main one. I guess that does complete our agenda items.
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.